So today is May the 26th. This is a Telecommunications Planning Commission meeting, and I guess we'll just call this meeting to order. So, Mr. Turner?
Father, we thank you for another wonderful work today. We ask that you lead, guide, and direct each of us on our daily, on our daily decisions that we make down here for our beautiful town. Go with us, with us, Father. Bless us and help us to do the right thing, in Jesus' name.
Chairman Kimbrel, it appears that all of members of the Planning Commission are here. We can make sure we make a note that we do have a forum.
I said 6:30. I told everybody around.
So we'll call you by name?
We'll ask what your, come on, sit down.
What's your next name?
Oh, okay. We'll do the, so we've got the quorum, so the review and adoption, the minutes or the meeting minutes from?
Yes, Chairman Kimbrel, you have two sets of minutes, because we don't meet every month due business, so you have before you minutes of December 19, 2023.
So do you want us to read these minutes? Do you want Emily to read?
You don't have to read them out loud, because you all have a copy of them, but you should be able to entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay. Do I have a motion that we accept the minutes to, what, the December the 19th and the 20th?
Well, just the December the 19th.
Okay. I'll step in.
Any discussion of the minutes?
So we'll go on to February the 22nd?
We'll need to vote you.
Do I vote those? Okay. Sorry, it's been a while.
We'll go through.
All right. So do we have a vote to approve these minutes?
Oh, we've already had a motion and a second and a discussion. I will say yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Well, then, may it?
Okay, ma'am. So that one passes. Okay. Chairman Kimbrel, you also have minutes from February 22nd, 2024.
Okay. Do I, I have a motion that we approve these minutes?
I'd like a motion to approve it.
And I'll second. Okay, now the motion has been approved, so we'll vote.
I say yes.
I say yes?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Those minutes were approved. I'll make sure at the end of this meeting that you'll need to sign both of these as chairmen to put them into the record. Okay?
Okay, now let's go on with old business, and that was, any property presented on old business? Any properly presented old business?
I don't think we have any.
Okay, then we're going to the new business. So that's a discussion of possible telecommunications tower proposed to be located on 135 Doe Road.
Okay. Chairman Kimbrel, if I may, two things on the change to the agenda briefly. I'd like to introduce our planner, and then I think we need to have our public comments before we get into the new business. Is it okay? So, to the board, just to let you know that our previous planner, Shep Merrill, has taken another job. We thought he was going to stay with us, and he changed his mind and back and forth. So anyway, we've been without a formal planner, city planner, for a couple of months now. With me tonight and with you all is Mr. Thomas Skehan, and he is a planner. He's worked with many communities and small towns and cities like us for many years, and he is going to be our planner until such time we are given a new planner. So just to let you know the background on it, that we pay a service fee to Southwest Development District for the professional services of a planner. Southwest Development does a lot of other things for us, but he's going to serve in this capacity until we get the new person onboarding or on-boarded into his new office. And so he's going to help us with all of our issues as far as planning, whether this issue or anything else that we decide to do. I do want to mention to the, to the board that we are back to the table on this particular issue due to my error. In absent of a planner, I encourage the board to move this issue on to the BZA, and we are not legally able to do it in that format. We can't jump over the ordinance process. And so he's going to share more about that momentarily and what we need to do from here. And I guess I will yield to the chairman, you have two people that want to speak publicly, and then we also have Reverend Reeves here that is, he's the one that is requesting the tower, and I believe I go from there. Okay? Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. It looks like Mr. Barker, I believe, is first on the list. If you, tell us who you are and what your address is with.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jennifer Barker. I'm sure most of you know where I live. I just want to make this very clear. There is no vendetta, no personal vendetta, for a cell tower to come into town. My husband and I are fully, fully appreciative if there is a cell tower, but not at the expense of the elders and the residents of this town, especially the resident that is right next to that space that you are looking at. There is no question that this town needs a tower, none at all, but not at the expense of the residents here. There has only been two people that have been running around this town, that have been doing legwork, boots on the ground, and these are the types of people that we need in office, getting signatures, making sure that they care about this community, letting our, our citizens know that they care. This tower is a big deal. It will help with communications in this town, but not at the exception and not at the expense of the people who live here and who are surrounding it. There are too many, too many journals, peer-reviewed journals, peer-reviewed articles that have talked about the health and the safety issues that are detriment to residents that live in a community where there is a cell tower right next to their homes. So please, do more research and take note that this is a needed item, but just not in that location. That's all.
Chairman Kimbrel, we have one other. I'm sorry, I can't read the name. Is it Harper?
No. Mr. Boyer?
Haron Boyers.
Okay, yeah, just stand up and give your address.
Okay, Haron Boyers. I live at 105 Doe Road. They're talking about putting the tower in at 135. They don't have an address where they even talk about putting it. It's on my address, 105 Doe Road. They don't have a 911 even, emergency number there where they're trying to put it at. And what's wrong with updating the cell tower we have on top of the water tower that's safe for everybody where it's at in the whole community and everything? Why not upgrade that and just go from that? Not saying we don't need the cell tower, place it, but not where it's in my back door. That's all I got to say. We'll talk other, if there's other questions, be asked. I mean.
Well, no, it's not. It, it just comes from the board.
Okay. I'm understanding that the reason our water, does anybody know the reason why the water is so cheap here in Saltillo? Because AT&T is paying for all the maintenance stuff for our water. All we got to pay is from the meter to our houses and what we pay for there. We take that down, let them go, then our water bill's gone junk $35, $40 a month for everybody, plus what you use. You don't believe it? Check it out. Ask people around. Here's a man, other people, Brandon, he's on the water board, all of them. That's why our water is so cheap. There's 96 counties in the state of Tennessee. I call 57, and they say we have the cheapest water bill in the state of Tennessee. Let's leave it that way, y'all. Thank you.
Okay. Chairman Kimbrel, I believe you also have, and the members of the board have a petition that was signed, that is for your use in decision-making and those kind of things. So I will leave that at that unless you have any additional questions. So I yield back to you chairman on a new business, and I think at this point, we might need to let our planner step in, and if it's okay with you maybe, that once he kind of goes through his part while we're here today, then maybe you can speak or you want to speak now.
Thank you again. My name is Tom Skehan. I'm with Southwest Tennessee Development District. A pleasure to serve the community, either on a temporary or permanent basis.
We never know these things at the district. It's my understanding that no formal site plan has been presented yet, indicating an address, indicating specifications in terms of the height of the tower, the location, et cetera. It's also my understanding that in Saltillo, the only place that they can go is a mixed-use district, which is the district that's highlighted in yellow in the map behind the mayor, which is a good bit of the town. The issue that the mayor spoke of earlier has to do with procedure. In Saltillo, you have to present a site plan for a cell tower to the Planning Commission first for them to review it, and then it goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the conditional use or the use permitted on appeal. And again, the use permitted on appeal is only allowed in a mixed-use district, and Doe Road is in a mixed-use district. So that explains the delay there. But absent a formal application with site plan, with documentation from the communication company, it's really a little bit premature going forward. I'm assuming that this is a petition for a cell tower and not an internet tower. Is that correct? Okay. As I do work in another community where we're getting a lot of internet towers being put up, so I want to make that clear. The ordinance begins, allows for the use on appeal in a mixed-use district, and there are conditions that that site plan has to follow. Height of the tower is one of them, the fall zone for the tower, the setback from the nearest residents, et cetera. So all of those have to be evident when we present the site plan before it would be forwarded from this body to the BZA for conditional use. Anything else, Mayor?
Well, I think the, for the board and the chairman, that the ordinance that was created was created and modeled after other surrounding communities. And so the ordinance that is present, that we shared in previous uses, that, that's where this ordinance came from. So we just didn't sit and make it up in a vacuum. It was made through other supports, such as from Southwest Development and working with other communities to put these towers in. And so that is, you know, the ordinance is what it is. And so there are some procedural things that accompany that, and you, I mean, you want maybe to explain the process of the board and how it gets to the Board of Aldermen, maybe?
Okay. In, in this case, it would not necessarily involve the Board of Aldermen, but if, if an application is presented to this Planning Commission, then the Planning Commission, first of all, would hear from me in terms of a memo and a recommendation, and I will look at the specifications that the ordinance prescribes. Okay? The Planning Commission will look at that and then decide as to whether or not that site plan meets the regulations or not, and they would vote. I only make a recommendation to the Planning Commission on this. Once they vote, if they approve the site plan, then it would be sent to the Board of Zoning Appeals for them to review the conditional use. They can, at that time, impose additional protections. All of zoning is basically rooted in public health, safety, and general welfare. And when we deviate from that, we get on real shaky ground, and Tennessee Code Annotated reiterates those values. And again, we would look at our regulations as determined because this ordinance that passed had to come before the Planning Commission. Planning Commission recommended to the legislative body, the legislative body adopted it, and it became law, if you will.
Good. Is that okay? Yeah. So, Chairman Kimbrel, I think it'd be a good time to have Reverend Reeves, he's the only one that's not been able to speak yet. Good?
All right. First, I want to say I love this town, and I'm highly offended that anyone would think I'd do anything that would hurt it. That's highly offensive. And for all the signatures on here, if I'd have read these papers, I'd have been the first one to sign them. But the fact is, you've not been presented the truth. Okay? This tower is an FCC-regulated tower. It is regulated by the FCC, all the specs, all the stats, from the height to the width to everything they're going to do, is FCC. So we're talking about, when I read the sheet, it said the radius, but what's the radius? Where's your source for that? Site me a source. What's the radius? You don't know. That's right, because we just copy and paste this stuff.
We don't know it or not, either.
No, no, no. It's my turn, Mr. Haron.
Go ahead.
I've listened to you for about 10 years.
I didn't know if I'd get to talk again or not. I just want to say it.
Um, this cell phone, I'll read it to the, to the people, and again, I don't blame anybody. Man, Tim Little's my friend. I don't care if his name's on here or not. There's no hard feelings with anybody in here. I love all of you. This does not change anything, because if I'd have read that, I'd have signed it first and I'd have passed the ordinance out as an Alderman. 100%. So I'm, I'm with you. But when it says this cell tower would be directly in front of and within a dangerous radius of where we as a community, what is the dangerous radius? And then it says increasing evidence about physical, psychological, physiological, biological harm. Where's that evidence? I don't see it on here. But I've got evidence. Because I've got the, my source is the FCC, where it says that you're exposed more to more dangerous frequencies by your Wi-Fi router in your house than everyone comes from that cell phone tower. That's the evidence. When you walk into your house, you're in more danger due to your microwave, your baby monitor, and your Wi-Fi router than this cell phone tower will be in danger. Then, this, this, this sheet says it causes cancer. Really?
Reverend Reeves, if you'll make sure you address your comments to the board, not to the?
Oh, well. According to the American Cancer Society, there is no evidence it causes cancer. Zero. There's the proof. There's my source.
Can you read that? I'll.
Um, and, and what was said, Mayor, about replacing the, nobody's looking to replace this tower down here. This tower remains. This is an additional tower, and it's the updated, it's not the big fat ones we think about. It's the little, small, skinny ones that they now put right in the city of Jackson. I mean, right in the city of Jackson. If these were harmful to residents, why aren't they putting it in a city of 90,000 people? Right in the city, right over in the Colton. Because they're not harmful. Um, first, you know, I do want to remind our board, this is a process we started long before this ordinance. If not for the death and the cancer that my mom went through, this has done, been done. But some things are more important than a cell phone tower. So I was dealing with my mom. So I do have some notes here that I think I want to address because of the public comments, if it's okay, Mayor. I want to remind, and again, statement, I don't, you know what? The cell phone tower, it would bless SPC, we Black Top Garden Lot. It would bless Saltillo. But man, I'm more concerned about my image now, as, as a, as a figure in this community that is poured into it, and there's witnesses in here of this, I mean, poured into it, to assume that I would do anything that would danger anybody is, is bad offensive. So now I feel like I need to clear my name. Okay? And I get very passionate when I talk about Saltillo, because I love this place. It's not where I live. This is where I'm going to die. Okay? So let me just, I want to, I just want to mention some, some things that even Mayor Billings may not even know. When this petition was took, it was took and the comment was made that Saltillo's issues all reside with Nathan. I am the problem of this community. That's what was said with this legwork we're talking about. All right? So let's talk about my, my, my issues with Saltillo, the problems that I've caused since I've been here. First, we have an adopted highway that runs two miles through this town that our church picks up the trash. Talk about legwork? We won't pick up the trash in this, in this town. For 10 straight years, we've done over 7,000 eggs. It'd happen again this Sunday. Sunny, 70,000-plus eggs for the kids in this town. But I'm an issue. I'm the reason for all the problems here. Thousands of dollars we poured into bicycles, giving away money, gift cards to families who needed it. But, but I'm going to endanger our town. When we did the Christmas tree, angels, we sponsored 17 kids that wouldn't have Christmas without Saltillo Pentecostal Church. Community Sunday, every year, you, you, most of you folks know this, every year, we dismiss church to have church. We have painted a pavilion downtown. We have had kids lunch on summer breaks. We have done distributed food during COVID when people couldn't afford food, but I'm the problem. I'm the issue here. Let me just continue. We open our church for storms if we need to, if our storm shelter's full. I provided our shower for kids that couldn't take showers so they could go to school. We run errands and get out on the roads for folks that can't get out in ice and storm, but I'm the problem. I'm the issue. I'm the reason our town has problems. Okay? Just another few minutes. We fix roofs. We fix HVAC units. We fix appliances. We've done yard work for elders. We picked up groceries, meds, run errands. We build handicap ramps, ramps for disabled people who couldn't afford it. We emcee about every event that this town has. We've walked poodles and dogs, and a dog show. There's nothing we, we don't, we don't, we don't say no to our town. If we do, it's very rare. Sometimes I just can't. I've overseen, this will be my eighth year River Day, but I'm the problem in this town. I've sat on this board for eight years as an Alderman.
Mayor, can I say something?
You're the chairman.
Okay. I'm looking at this that you have presented here, and it says that it is, this is, it says based on a review of studies published up until 2011, and it says that RF radiation is a possibly known carcinogen to humans. So talking about brain tumors from the use of cell phones and being exposed to the radiation and all. But this meeting is about the cell phone tower. We can all sit here and tell you what all we've done.
Can you?
Yes.
I'd like to hear.
I lived here, that's not what we're here for.
No, my, my character was attacked, Ms. Betty. At this point, I only care about the tower.
We're not here to argue.
Okay. And that's set up till 2011.
I know.
We're down 20.
Everything I have read that says that the FCC has not updated their standards in years, and we're up to 5G now, you know, because this started out with analog, but this meeting is for the tower. This is not to state everything that you've done, I've done, or anybody else has done here. We all care about this town. We've lived here, I've lived here for 50 years, and there's a lot of other people that's lived here for, we need to be respectful to our neighbors, and we need to look out for each other. And there's been so much stuff on Facebook that is not true. Things, opinions turn into gossip, and gossip turns into so-called truths that are not truths. But yes, we need a tower, in my opinion, but location has a lot to do with that, because I drove all around Saltillo and everybody within, up until Ms. Kathy Smith's house, has good cell phone service. But I think we need.
But it don't break down between Villageville and here.
It does, and I know. I have called the law enforcement and talked to them about it, and we need a tower somewhere, in my opinion, between Villageville and Saltillo. Because when you, law enforcement needs to be out there to work a reg, ambulance, or fire department, that's where I think we need to focus, where our coverage needs to be. This is no personal attack on you. I respectfully, you know, listen to what you have to say. Everybody wants a cell tower. You know, there's lots of people that would like to have a cell tower, but I think we need to focus on what's best for, you know, the people that's coming to Saltillo, leaving Saltillo, going to works, safety issues or whatever. And I think we need to, you know, the ordinance was put in place, so I think we need to go back to what this ordinance is saying.
Yeah. Chairman Kimbrel, if I may, just call for a point of order, and you started to get to it, but the tower itself, the ordinance is what we need to focus on. I do think we need to yield to Reverend Reeves if he's got anything else, we kind of interrupted him a little bit, but.
Well, back to the FCC, and, and I did feel the need, because I felt like my character was attacked when you, anyway, not you, but I'm talking to you about. And I would put our town in, I'd be the first one to sign off no on this tower. I'm known for being very fair on that board. So, the tower, again, regulated by FCC, and I shared the link, there's actually more radio frequency, RF exposure from everyday items in people's homes such as cordless phones, baby monitors, Wi-Fi routers. When you visit Walmart, you're getting hit with more RF exposure walking through the automatic doors than you ever will the cell phone tower. And this is from the attorneys, because we had a week notice, they couldn't be here. These towers are manufactured to withstand winds over 100 mile an hour. It is very rare event that there is any failure. They are designed to fall within the radius. They do not fall down, they come down, they break apart. Honestly, in the event there's a failure due to major wind event, chances of any surrounding structure would already be gone. Tornado hits a tower, it's going to hit everything around it. This would be a tower where all carriers could use it, because I know that's, that's always been a question. And I'll yield back to you guys, and thank you for listening, and, and I'm no way, Ms. Betty, I'm not trying to attack anybody. I just want to make sure this body knows my heart. And no way would I ever submit anything to anybody, Mr. Skehan, or Mayor Billings, or anybody else that I think.
Can you open that door a second?
Would jeopardize our town. Zero chance I would do that. And I don't think anybody sitting here thinks I would know. Not even Mr. Haron would think I'd, you know, he's trying to bring out knowledge, maybe I didn't know.
I feel like you're trying to attack me.
We're not going to have the back and forth in here.
For putting it right beside my house. You're going to make $40,000 off of it. Nobody's going.
We're not going to have the back and forth in here. Thank you, sir. Chairman, back to a point of order on the telecommunications tower, that one of the, the issues primarily that we're discussing, we've heard from our planner, from Skehan, that what is lacking for us to do any business whatsoever is the plan, so the site plan. So I don't know if you've had any communication with the company, but I mean, that's got to be followed, based on what he's told, so.
No, all we have is that, that what I presented last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, they have that.
Which is non-official site plan, but preliminary, because they don't want to spend thousands of dollars without any chance of variances.
Right.
And I don't blame them, you know?
Yeah.
And we have an idea, because they submitted a picture and a plot plan, but not an official, notarized, fake sealed.
Yeah, there's, there's several points that I don't know if you addressed that.
Well, first of all, again, the site plan, actually, we don't have an application. The fees for that application haven't been paid, and we don't have a site plan. Now, you, you mentioned a number of variants. It would be my position to quote Tennessee Code Annotated and tell this Planning Commission as well as the Board of Zoning Appeals that there are no legal grounds for any variance for a cell tower. Tennessee Code Annotated is very specific in terms of the powers of the Board of Zoning Appeals. One of those is to grant variances, but to grant a variance, there has to be something innately, that's what I'm looking for, inhibiting or encumbering the development based on the physical lot. The lot's got to be either very narrow, the topography is such that maybe if I'm building a house and I have to build the house closer to the road, because if I build a house according to the setbacks, I'm going to be straddling a gulch, and I want to bring the house forward, the BZA can look at that. Again, it's the physical characteristics of that lot. I would, I would not recommend to this body or to any Board of Zoning Appeals a variance on. I would not recommend to this body or to any Board of Zoning Appeals a variance on a cell tower in terms of height, setbacks, a fall radius, et cetera. The regulations that Saltillo has can be found on pages ten through thirteen. Yes, ten through thirteen, in their zoning ordinance. And this was, these are the steps that a engineer, architect, surveyor, designs your site plan to follow. They would have to go through and just make sure that they check off each point. One of them is, you know, that co-use, you know, of utility structures is encouraged. It's not required, but it's encouraged. So there has to be some sort of address there that, okay, we approached the water district. There's no room on the tower, or it would be impractical for us to do that. So those, each of those have to be addressed. And then the Planning Commission can look at that, and if they're satisfied, or regardless if they're satisfied or not, the Fourteenth Amendment guarantees applicants the right to petition the Board of Zoning Appeals. Okay? I'd be the last person to ever say to somebody, I don't think you have a chance. I would discourage you from going. No. I tell people, it is your legal constitutional right to approach the BZA. That doesn't mean that they'll grant the variance, grant, you know, the conditions that you want, but it is your right to approach it. Anything else, Mayor?
Chairman, members of the board.
I have a couple of questions. One is, I would like to know your information, where you got on the water situation. I really would.
This is not a, this is not a back and forth with the people that are here for the meeting. This should be communication to the chairman, not to the audience.
Where the information came about the water. That's what I'd like to know.
Who can answer that?
Can we have the Harringtons here to verify that information?
I can speak to the water department, because I've already talked with them. They have one AT&amp;T tower. Use on the water tower near the factory. So is that the question?
No, the question is, are we going to build one up if we get a water tower? That's my question.
Yeah, that would be a question for the water department.
That's what he's saying. Yes.
If they take the cell phone.
That's what Brandon and Larry Penny on the water board says, if they take that down or it quits, then AT&amp;T doesn't have your thing up and there's the maintenance on it. What do you say, Reverend Reed?
That tower's not coming down. That was never the plan. That tower stays.
Even if they stop that, we get another tower, it may stay up there for fifty years, but AT&amp;T gets rid of it. Our water bill is gone.
Chairman, I will call for a point of order again, because the water company is not here to answer that question.
Okay, that's right, too. But that's what I've been told, is one reason why I'm here for everybody.
I will ask you again, this is a point of order for this meeting. Chairman, back to you.
Are there any more questions? I have a question. What is the difference in the, quote, radius of exposure between the projected tower and the current tower? Why is this tower a problem for our residents out there? What is the radius exposure for this one? And why aren't they being considered and factored into the decision of a cell phone tower in general for the city of Saltillo?
I'll tell you just what I know from what I've read. I know the distance wasn't specific in this, but like I said, you can get on the internet and you can find all kinds of answers for, you know, it's safe, it's not safe. But more sites that I saw said you needed to be at least a quarter of a mile away from a tower. So this was probably put in without all the other, way before, you know, all the newer technology. That I don't know, but I do know that I have read it.
And if we're worrying about exposure, is there one person in this room that does not have or use their cell phone every single day?
This is not a discussion with the people that are here. For a point of order, Chairman, that the cell phone ordinance has nothing to do with exposure. It has to do with construction and light size. So the BZA can deal with those kind of health and safety issues. But this board or the Planning Commission has nothing to do with health and safety issues, because they have to follow the ordinance. Now, you go back to Chairman.
Okay. Is there any more questions about, what, the tower?
The ordinance.
The ordinance?
I don't have any questions. I think the thing that we're missing is the site plan specifically.
Yes.
And what I understood, correctly, the city planner, that the company in question needs to submit a plan. And if that plan is approved by the board, or not approved by the board, it will still go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. They had the right, they had the right to, if we deny as a board the approval of a site plan, they still can petition the BZA, even though the plan was not approved by the board, is what I understood.
They would be within the constitutional right to petition the BZA. If the site plan failed to meet the requirements in this ordinance, in my opinion, the BZA would be remiss in granting variances from these conditions, these provisions. Because the BZA doesn't have the authority to write the ordinance. The ordinance was proposed by the Planning Commission and adopted by the legislative body.
That's all the questions I have.
So do we need to make a motion now?
There's nothing really to make a motion on.
Okay, is there? Okay. So we just need to get the, all the specs, all the information we need from the cell phone tower, or from the tower people.
They need to have an application and a site plan.
So that's just for now.
I'm rather formal. I need to be recognized by the chair, so.
Tell me your last name again. I can't pronounce it.
Skahan.
When people ask.
S K E H A N.
People ask me all the time, how do you spell that? And I say, it's real simple. T O M. So, but earlier in the evening, the chair asked me about amending ordinance and that procedure. And these zoning ordinance provisions are not written in stone. They are written to the best of our ability at the time that they are written. They can be amended. They may be found to be adequate, and in that case, no action is ever needed. They may be found to be too restrictive, and that can be amended. They can be found to be too lenient, and that can be amended. That's up to this body, Planning Commission, to decide. Because these regulations should reflect the community values. And there's a process for that. Planning Commission would take under advisement the changes. They would vote on it. They would forward it to the legislative body. Again, the legislative body would have the final say, and the public would have a right to chime in, because a public notice is required and before those changes are made.
Okay, so I guess this is the end of the discussion on this, on the tower? All right, so do we have any other, what, like, any other discussions?
Yeah, I don't think we have any other discussions at this time.
No other business?
I believe so.
So do we have a motion that we adjourn?
Make that motion. Pause seconds.